عوذ بالله من الشيطان رجيم بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم والحمد لله رب العالمين وصلات وسلام على اشرف الانبياء والمرسلين وعلى آله وصحبه اجمعين ونشهد ان لا اله الا الله وحده لا شريك له ونشهد ان محمد ابته ورسوله اللهم لا علم لنا الا ما علمتنا انك انت العليم الحكيم اللهم علمنا ما انفعنا منفعنا بما علمتنا وزدنا علماء ورزقنا فهم النبيين وحفت المرسلين اللهم افتح لينا هكمتك وانشر علينا رحمتك يا ذل جلال والكرام وصل اللهم على سيدنا محمد وعلى آله الكرام ولا حول ولا قوة الا بالله العلي الاضيم بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته welcome everyone الحمد لله we put together this small little session for the for several purposes partly to promote my book and partly to discuss a subject that I wrote about almost five years ago and a lot has happened in these five years that needs a little bit of updating and also gives me a chance to scrutinize my own work to see whether or not it still holds any value five years since the the book the book was published it was actually published in twenty nineteen the book was published in twenty nineteen but the process of getting it finalized reviewed and then and then released for for a public perusal that took a couple of years at least during that time we we filmed a series of sessions we did I did a short course on the book and the subject matter itself for those who had an early access to the book and then later on uploaded those sessions to the my YouTube channel and it's been five years now so it was it was finally released in twenty nine in twenty twenty two and so since then now three years have passed and in that interim you know we saw certain geopolitical transformations that took place that really shook the world the the war in Ukraine with Russia and then immediately after the war in there's something there's something that I had originally intended to do with this work when I started writing on this subject back in two thousand and seventeen I had filled up almost almost about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand words on the subject matter itself which was really long I mean that was like a first draft that could not even be published without editing I I ended up going deciding to split the subject matter that I was going to talk about particularly this book regarding the eschatological events in the finality how they're going to transpire and what is really the meaning of all that and the the core tenants or the core principles that I wanted to address each of them had to then take their own sort of format because of how much because the more I researched on the subject the more I studied it the more I had to put together so I ended up first of all publishing this book this book the three questions this was sort of the foundation of the subject matter it pertains to the three questions that the Jews asked in in Yathrib to a delegation of of the Quraysh who came to Yathrib looking for a solution of how to deal with this individual whom we know as Nabi Muhammad so the Jews say to these individuals these this delegation ask him three questions if he gives you the answers then consider him a prophet and if he cannot answer them then do with him as you will now from the from the Muslim perspective these questions were sort of a tester and it had to do with the dynamics the political dynamics of the Quraysh and their issue that they took with the prophets of Allah عليه وسلم but from the Jewish perspective I I have not seen many people try to address this from the Jewish perspective as to why did they ask these particular questions because in their theology in their scriptures there's no such criterion of these three questions being the questions that you need to ask to a an individual to test whether their prophethood is authentic or not so my query on this was why did they ask these three questions and why these three questions in terms of their revelation one question is answered in Suratul Isra in complete brevity there's just a simple one like two word answer that comes to them the other two questions are put in Suratul Kahf and then these two Surahs are arranged in the Quran side by side in addition to that the Prophet of Allah عليه وسلم then said regarding the Antichrist that he who preserves Suratul Kahf in some narrations the entire Surah in some narrations the first ten ayat in some other narrations the last ten ayats but the idea being with regards to this Surah whoever preserves it Manhafidah and and some translations you will say you will see they say whoever memorizes it which I don't think I think that's really degrading or lowering the the weight of the Prophet's word to simple wrote memorization rather whoever understands what this Surah really entails and whoever preserves its understanding and lets that Surah guide them that person will be saved from the fitnah of the Dajjal and so from that perspective I then wrote this book the three questions trying to understand or to address these three questions why these three questions and what is their relevance to what is transpiring in the world today but in order to study this that particular subject of these three questions there is a fundamental principle that needs to be understood that needs to be to be studied oh I have it here and that is the concept of time and cosmology the world as it has been designed and has been ordained to undergo this transformation until its finality and then what is the element of time regarding this entire transformation because time is a factor that is being directly mentioned by the Prophet of Allah عليه وسلم with regards to the end of times with regards to the final hour and it is also one of the questions that was posed by Jibreel عليه السلام to the Prophet of Allah عليه وسلم when he descended during the last few days of the Prophet's life to ask him four questions and three questions the Prophet answered but the fourth question when he asked about the hour right اخبرني عن الساعة and ساعة with the Arabs can mean an hour literally the sixty minute interval that we we refer to but can really just mean time just tell me about time right it can mean time a ساعة can be the exact sixty minutes they were referring to can even be a moment there's no really set measure to it so this in conclusion of that Hadith the Prophet of Allah عليه وسلم said that the Jibreel came to you to you Muslims he came to you to teach you your Deen and so this becomes a constituent of the religion it's not just about Fiqh and Aqidah Islam Imaan Ihsan and time in particular is a proponent of your Deen you have to understand it not just in its finality but in its origin in in and insofar as human origin as well a kind of time that we call zaman because now this pertains human origin and human eschatology the finality the grand epic of mankind from its beginning to its finality so that for that I wrote this book the divinity of time and cosmology and some people have criticized me about using the the word divinity there I and I think it should be obvious that I'm not saying that time is divine or cosmology is divine you know giving it that attribution this is a it's a sort of a you know an an elegant way of saying that there is more to it than just the mundane in terms of when we talk about time there's more to it than just talking about the clock or talking about hours and days and calendars there's more to it than that and when we talk about cosmology there's more to it than the physical universe there's more to it than things like the like black holes and galaxies and and supernovas and you know space and all these things there's more to it than that this is why I use the term divinity there's more to it than just what we can materially ascribe to these two books are important if you really want to study the science of eschatology as well as to penetrate the depth of the subject of the Antichrist because these are the aspects that directly pertain to him and time and reality or cosmology for us now reality are things that he would manipulate to position himself now there's something interesting I'm I'm gonna I'm just gonna talk briefly on this and then I'll I'll leave the floor open there's there's something remarkable about the human being and that is the human mind in the Quran Allah سبحانه وتعالى says that we have that we will show them our signs on the horizons and in themselves until they it becomes manifestly clear to them that this is the truth and it is this positioning of the human beings essence his soul his mind in the in between of two domains of the earthly and the heavenly of these of the material and the spiritual of what we would now call in technical terms the phenomenal and the numinal in that he has access we have access as human beings to wonders of both these domains as well as mysteries of both these domains and it's this placement that is that has been for for since the beginning of the dawn of human history has been the subject of inquiry the highest subject of inquiry for for the human being in so in so much that there is a specific branch of philosophy called the philosophy of mind that tries to study the nature of the mind in and of itself in terms of or or rather to seek out the answers to two paramount questions or fundamental questions one of these is defined as the problem of identity and then the other is defined as the problem of destiny who who is the human being what is the human being in that he can understand from this material reality and be fascinated by it unlike any other creature and yet at the same time understand something from a different reality and be all the more fascinated by that reality that he cannot see that he cannot physically interact with and yet believes firmly so that that reality exists you see so what what does that make the human being does it make the human being because compared to every other creature sentient creature in the world the human being is really at the hierarchy at the top of that hierarchy what does that make the human being is he in some sense divine is he in some sense like a god and history has shown many of you know people have regarded the human being in that sort of degree and some human beings have even proclaimed the divinity for themselves after having witnessed or rather having tested or tasted that that power with which they can control they can manipulate they can bring about change that let alone other creatures their own kind cannot bring about but they can do it and that power drives them to a certain mode of thinking in which they claim divinity for themselves like Fir'aun for example or Nimrod or Naim some such you know individual in history or other individuals other people would regard certain individuals as having divine power as being among the gods like Zeus for example right we don't know who he was really Zeus or 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 others like Minerva or Juno the the Roman gods or Odin and 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 Thor the the Norse gods we don't know who these people were were they real people were they just figments of imagination they were built up were they perhaps prophets and because of the miracles that they perform people then raised them to a status of godliness or perhaps they were just heroes you know who performed such fiats such amazing fiats that the rest of their people were just in awe of them and then over time turned them into divine entities we don't know exactly what happened the fact of the matter that what I'm trying to draw attention to here is that we do we tend to do this right Jesus this is what the Christians did and in the early stages they debated as to whether or not he should be given divine status and there was a strong clash in the Christian world in the Christian world regarding this matter until it had to be resolved in what's known as the Council of Nicaea in three twenty five when the term Christianity was actually now invented and coined but for three hundred years they fought over this concept as to whether or not he should be given divine status so why do we do this as human beings why do we tend to you know fit into this category because in the finality of our history there then comes an entity who is not just given divine status nor is that status debatable but he claims it for himself and it is granted to him without objection unlike in the past where historically we can look and see that there are there is evidence of conflict as to whether or not certain individuals should be given divinity or should be regarded as that the clashes that occur between them where individual other individuals come in and oppose them strongly like Moses coming in and opposing Pharaoh right or Ibrahim عليه السلام opposing Nimrod there are individuals who who get direct opposition and yet this individual will claim to be at that status but will not have any firm resistance per se and any resistance that comes towards him he will easily overcome that and so the biggest question here now is why why is this entity ordained to come around and in comparative to all the other figures in history one cannot help but just be in awe of such great evil terrible yes but great nonetheless and so this is what this book is about the this is the first that I had planned out in a series you will find in there that I have made mention of writing three books on this subject but I'll confess right now I've actually written six more manuscripts on this subject so it's actually now expanded even further into six books like I said at between you know the time of finishing this book and now those five years so much has happened that I've had to now bring in other aspects and explain them in much more detail but what this book is really it is it is a systematic a scientific approach and when I say scientific I'm speaking philosophically I don't mean scientific like in the lab wearing a white coat and whatnot I'm speaking philosophically it is a is a methodical approach to to identifying the Antichrist using what has been provided to us as Muslims in the scriptures how do you put those pieces together to identify him not insofar as going out into the public and pointing out look there he is no but in understanding first and foremost that the shadow of an of an anticipated individual always precedes that individual their reputation comes beforehand the stage that they need to perform on is established before they arrive and so the stage is being set and it's being set in 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 a in a in a rapid manner with so many constituents being put up everywhere that it becomes impossible to distinguish the stage from reality itself it's it's almost impossible to distinguish the props that would be used in that final act from the the world the real world around us and what reality should be because we seem to have forgotten what life should be we have adapted a kind of a modus of existence that is built on a certain script where which if you were to examine that script and break it down you would be astounded as to what your life is like you will you will be you you will be you'll feel like you know the world is definitely ending if you were to just examine that critically because we have now become a people who stopped thinking we really we've stopped thinking and because we've stopped thinking we've stopped philosophizing we are no longer able to project an understanding of reality the way our predecessors did from revelation we are now just mimicking what other people are projecting of reality in other words we are adapting the philosophers of other people meaning they are doing the thinking for us they are telling us what reality is they are telling us how we should live our lives they are telling us what morality is what good is and what bad is what right and wrong is they are the ones telling us and yet they are the ones who are setting up this stage and this is not conspiratorial thinking this is not conspiracy theory that we're doing here so that's what this book is about I'm not going to go too deep into it I'll give you a highlight of what is contained in there they the first three chapters lay out the groundwork of the of the methodology itself and how to study it it establishes the principles of eschatology the science as it is and how it is studied there is a chapter in there that is called prophecy and prediction that is an important aspect to distinguish because when you get into this science it tends to become largely predictive in nature and people try to do that they try to predict when it's going to happen see when is the Jal coming and when is Mahdi coming and you know I think it's going to happen in twenty something and they can't do this type of thinking you see and that's not what this science is about again if you study the divinity of time and cosmology if you look at that book you will at least understand this is this is why I wrote that book so you don't fall into that mode of trying to figure out what's going to happen when that's not what this science is about the prophecies the signs they're not given to us so that we can try to figure out what's going to happen when that's not why these signs were given to us signs are given to you so that you can be cautious of the road that you're taking so that you can be observant of that pathway and and know when there is an obstacle coming up ahead so that you can adjust course and that's what this science is really about for you to gain benefit its Thamara its its fruit is so that you can maintain your course on faith that's really what your objective is is to maintain your faith in a world that is faithless is to be in remembrance and conscious awareness of God in a world that is godless then the the middle section of the book goes into the into two prophets historical prophets and though actually there are more other prophets that I would have wanted to speak about in this but the subject matter demanded I only addressed these two prophets one of them is Prophet Sulaiman عليه السلام and I speak about his vision his dream and then I also speak about his staff and his death the second prophet is the Prophet Isaiah who is not mentioned in the Quran but he is acknowledged as a prophet even in our tradition his book the Book of Isaiah was thought to be lost for two thousand years it was discovered recently among the Dead Sea Scrolls and in there there are certain passages that are truly remarkable the discovery of the of this book brought to light a lot of prophecies of the Prophet of Allah عليه وسلم that were more or less oblivious or or scholars were more or less oblivious to prior they did not know about these one of these was the prophecy of the Messiah himself of Christ and the other was the prophecy of the Prophet of Allah عليه وسلم after Christ and you will find in there that I have referenced the the sections from the Book of Isaiah both in the original Hebrew and in the Koina Greek and I have also done a translation which is my own in addition to translations done by other biblical scholars and then I have also shown where alterations have been made in an attempt to hide the truth that came out of those prophecies and this all culminates to now the third section of the book in which I actually now introduce the figure of the Antichrist the Dajjal himself and the core area of study is from the Hadith a Hadith known as the Hadith of Tameem Ad Dari which pertains to the island in which Tameem Ad Dari and his his crew of sailors they got stranded on and then they encountered the Dajjal and there was an interaction with the Antichrist there and then after that I stopped the book right there because the the subject now needs to go into more detail the subsequent book on this is going to look at history as a whole from Adam عليه السلام to identify pivotal points in history in human history and how they culminate to that final hour and then Insha Allah there will be a book on secularism and normalization and another book on modernity and post-modernity and all these different different ideologies and philosophies that are coming up around us these are these are really the center of my study I'm not too much engrossed into trying to go into the into the individual Hadith and the prophecies that have been made about the Dajjal I think these are very well accessible by everyone so and there are many scholars who have dedicated their lives to studying that so I'm trying to focus my study on other areas that I believe people are not fully aware of anyway I'm going to stop there that was a brief about the about my work on this book in particular I don't want to turn it into a lecture so Insha Allah we had actually planned this as a Q and A discussion so I'll leave the floor open now for any questions from you guys here or from those on the Zoom Insha Allah وعليكم السلام ورحمة الله
First of all forgive me because I have not really formed the questions I had a few questions but and my thoughts tend to run away so please stop me from going into forbidden areas
Go ahead Insha
When I read this book first the second time the divinity of time and cosmology I also kind of figured because you had mentioned that along with time even light as we say I mean I'm using the term light at the moment is something sacred right
Yes
and another element that came to my mind was the dust because light when I tried to study it as much as I could I could figure out it was about basically a state of motion of jumping of electrons you know
Right
so the whole human structure if we take out take the electrons and everything maybe we can I mean the Dajjal area we can try to replicate each and everything of that that right but what they can't replicate is that spark the first spark that was needed to get those electrons into motion the thing that actually runs the human body that is why is that why they asked the third question about the roof because the body can be replicated because we understand the concept of how it works but what they can't replicate is that first spark that was needed so that is my first question
Right that's a good question and I I tried to address that in the in the book but I haven't gone too much into it Um, in, in both the books actually, uh. What, what we call light. When we break it down into sort of the quantum level of, of waves and particles. Uh, and photons. That is not actually light itself. It's, it's carrying the property of light. It has the attribute, the attribute of light. In that it's able to reveal. It's able to, to, to fill a space of darkness and reveal what is, uh, what is not seen or what is not, um. Yeah, what we cannot see. So. When they asked about the ruh, the answer was very, very concise. Tell them that the ruh is from the affair of my lord and you have been given very little knowledge about it. And this really offended them because they had a certain understanding of the ruh. And at the time of asking this question, I do not believe, I don't, I don't think they had. Any clue as to really what it pertained or what that question would ultimately, or that the answer they expected, what it would ultimately. Result in. But they had. They had, I mean, they themselves didn't witness this, but their predecessors had witnessed. Um, Nabi Isa Alaih Salam performing a miracle in which. A certain individual who had died, the Bible calls him Lazarus. Um, was brought back to life. And then there was a, he, he, he crafted a, a dove, a bird from clay. And then it came to life and flew away. And these, these things in particular, the Quran says, be idhni illa, obviously by the permission of Allah. So it's Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala who granted that to happen. And this is where the wisdom of it really comes in when you look at that. Because these are the things that the later Christians now started arguing and saying, well, this is obviously divine quality. Uh, only a god can do that, therefore, right? But having failed that initial test of the Messiah, the Jews. And the Romans unleashed upon them and they being kicked out of the Holy Land in fulfillment of a prophecy as well. A prophecy, a promise that was given to them by Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Look at the first eight ayat of Suratul Isra. Two promises they were given. First in Babylon was fulfilled. When they, when they conspired against the Prophet Isaiah, and that's why I've mentioned him in the book as well. And they got kicked out of the Holy Land. Again, they did the same thing. And when they finally got kicked out of the, of the Holy Land by the Romans. Then they realized, okay, so this was the second promise fulfilled. Means that we've done something monumental here. They had, they've already rejected the Messiah. The, the deal is sealed for them. There's no other way out. Some of them. You know, sort of accepted that fate and went into this mode of redemption or wanting to seek redemption. Others went um, in migration because Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, we, we say, we, we, we split them up and scattered them across the land. From that point. So some of them actually settle in Yathrib. And they settled in Yathrib because of certain indicators in their own scriptures that mention that a prophet would be coming. In uh, in Yathrib. He would be coming to that city. And that's why they went and settled there. Some of these indicators are found also in the Book of Genesis, uh, with the Prophet Abraham. And it mentions in the Book of Genesis Bir Shiva, which they say is the city now in Israel. Uh, stolen Palestinian land, but. They said that that's their city Bir Shiva, but that's not correct in the, in the reading of the Bible. The Bir Shiva is actually Biur Shaiba. Which is the well of Zamzam that Shaiba, the Prophet's grandfather rediscovered after it had been long been buried. So these were some of the prophetic indicators that they looked at in their own scriptures and put the pieces together and say that this is where that prophet is going to come. So they came in and they settled in Yafred. But there are other aspects of theirs. I don't have time to really go into the scattering. Some of it went to, you know, some of them went to Constantinople. Many of them also spread out. They went to Yemen. They went to the Indian subcontinent. They went to. You know, that, you know, what was, you know, became Horasan then. Um, so they really spread out. Many of them also went to North Africa. Some of their reading came in that, well, now that they have rejected that Messiah who was sent to them. What do they then do? And they convinced themselves in part that, no, they were correct in rejecting him. But now they were almost deceived into accepting him. So this is how they sort of, you know, made themselves feel good about it. You see, he, he almost deceived us into accepting him. We almost fell into the trap. So what we need to do now is we need to set up a criteria. So that when the Messiah actually comes, in case it's another imposter, we can. You know, fill in the checkmarks. So they built a criteria and that criteria has to be fulfilled by this coming Messiah. But when the Prophet Sallallahu Alaih Wasallam came and the Jews were told this. It may be that your lord still has mercy on you. One more chance, one more opportunity. When this prophet comes, you have to accept him. But if you return with your facade, wa inu udd tum faudna. We will return with our punishment and then it's going to be a permanent loss on you. So they put up this criteria, but when the Prophet Sallallahu Alaih Wasallam came and they started playing these games with him. Then it became manifestly clear that they're not going to accept him. Why? He did not meet that criteria. They did not meet any of those checkmarks that they had preset, you see? I'm sorry? Yes, they knew that he was going to be Arab. They knew that he was going to come from the line of Ismail. They knew all of that. And some of the Jews who became Muslim, some of them were even rabbis themselves. They, they confessed to the Prophet Sallallahu Alaih Wasallam. In, in what the Quran also attested. Yes, we actually, we know you, we know you better than we know our own children. They, you know, they said, in fact, we, we trust you more than we trust our own children because our own children will betray us. You would never betray us. They attested even to that extent. They knew that he was going to be an Arab prophet. They knew that he's going to come from Makkah. They knew he's going to settle in Medina. There was a, there was a king. Um, uh, one of the, one of the, yeah, the Himaite Tuba. We'll come to this in the, when we do, when we, when we reach that part in the Seerah, Insha Allah. Um, but he came to Yathrib and they, and he wanted to raise the city to the ground and these Jews, these very same Jews. They went out and they spoke to him and they said, don't do that. Because you will be committing a grave mistake here because this is the place that this prophet is going to come. And that king also purchased a, a home there. He built a, he had a house built and left it as a waqf. To which that prophet is going to come and live in. And this is part of their, they've, these are all things that they have kept concealed because after now the Prophet Sallallahu Alaih Wasallam. They started now changing their interpretives completely. And they said, now, now it's going to be upon ourselves to determine our own message. This is now the, a fresh reading of the scripture. The Messiah is not sent to them. The Messiah is somebody they determine for themselves. But here is the problem. I, I know I'm taking a long turning to answer your question about the ruh. But, but that's, this is why, you know, it's, it's very complicated to, to get down to. The problem here is that scientifically, if, if we condense the last fifteen hundred years, scientifically speaking. We can construct a body. We can put the cells together. We can, you know. Let it go through its transformation and whatnot. And they've done it. They've done the cloning. They've done the in vitro fertilization. They've done. They've done, what is it called? Test tube petri dish fertilization. They've done all these things. They have built synthetic organs that are functioning. They can do all that, but they cannot give it life. And that's where they're sort of quote unquote stuck. Because there's two aspects to the ruh. There is that ruh which is called Ruh Al Haywani. It is called the animus spirit. It is that ruh that animates the body. That manages the body, that gives the body its agent intelligence, its base algorithmic functionality. That ruh. That right now it, they is doing things within you that you are not even aware of. It is that ruh that is keeping the kidneys functioning, that is making the lungs. Expand and contract, drawing breath, that is regulating the heartbeat, that's doing all these things within you. That's the body's agent intelligence. But there's another ruh that binds the soul to the body. When the soul is breathed into the body, that binds the two together. That ruh, when it's taken out at the moment of death, it severs the bond between soul and body. Completely, permanently. That ruh. That is the one that they have no clue about. They do not know anything about. Insofar as the animus spirit, they're trying to mimic that. Coming to now your question. Yes, they're trying to build something that would do that. I don't know what it is. I don't know what they, I mean, I do have some theories, but I'm not going to share them. Because I don't speak on things that I'm not certain of myself. So I have some ideas. But I'm not going to leave them out in the, in the public. Um, but I don't know what it is that they are working on. There are many other theories circulating around, people talking about cybernetics and these type of things. It's possible. Maybe it's one of those things. Maybe it's an advancement of those things. Maybe it's something that is completely hush, hush that nobody knows about. Uh, but definitely in terms of, in, in, in terms of theory and. You know, they're definitely trying to do something of the sort. In other words, to put it more bluntly. They are going to make their Messiah. They're going to build their Messiah. Really, they're going to fashion themselves. Because it has to meet their criteria. Their own made up criteria. And so they have to design it accordingly. You have to remember a fundamental principle. Al Maani Qabla Al Mabani, meaning always precedes the form. Function always comes before the construct of the entity. If I want to make something, I have to ensure I know what its function is going to be before I make that thing. And so they already have the function of it. They have the criteria. Now they have to build it to fulfill that criteria. So they're going to make their own Messiah. I don't know if that helped answer your question. It's a very, very long answer. I think that was a lecture by itself. Um, there's a question here. At what time period was Prophet Isaiah? Prophet Isaiah was uh, just around the. Uh, the seven hundred uh, B C, around seven hundred B C. If I'm, if I'm correct. I have the exact date mentioned in the book. But he was in that time period. He was in the interim between Prophet Suleiman Alaih Salam and, and uh. And Prophet Isa Alaih Salam. He was in that interim in between. He came at the time of the. Um, of the Babylonian conquests. The first Babylonian conquest was defeated. He was sent. And he advised the, the king of the Jews at that time. Who was a pious individual. And he listened to Isaiah's counsel. And um, they were able to keep the Babylonians at bay. Um, they actually captured Nebuchadnezzar. And they kept him prisoner. Then for some reason, that king passed away. The next king who came in while Isaiah was still alive. He wanted to do his own thing. And so they ended up freeing Nebuchadnezzar. Which he was counseled not to do. Nebuchadnezzar went back to Babylon, built up his army within a few short years. Um, he attacked. But in that interim. Isaiah kept warning the Jews that what they're doing is not, is going to lead them astray. They were, they were reaching height of corruption again. And finally, you know, they decided that he has to die. So. They ended up, he, he tried to escape. This is how the legend goes. Ibn Kathir mentions it like this. He tried to escape them. A tree called out to him and he hid into the tree's trunk. But then Iblis showed the Jews where he was hiding. They took a saw and cut the saw in half. Killing Isaiah in the process as well. And as soon as they did that, that was the mark. To kill a prophet of God, that's the mark. That's the end. You can't go further than that. You have to, now the punishment is divine. So as soon as they did that, by then Nebuchadnezzar was already on his way and destroyed the, the Jewish kingdom. Um, the kingdom of Israel. Um, did the prophet mention him? No, he did not mention him. But he has been mentioned by, by our historians. And his legend has been taken out of the Israelite traditions. So Ibn Kathir mentions him. Uh, Imam At Tabari mentions him in a lot of detail. Much of it is derived from the Old Testament and then put together along with certain Israelite accounts. Which some of them are extraneous. They really are borderline. So you have to be careful when you look at these accounts, especially in Ibn, uh, in Imam At Tabari's uh. In, in his world history because he puts everything in there. And this is a mark of good scholarship actually. Because he, he shows you that we are aware of these and the scholars know how to filter them out. Um, any other questions? Well, symbolism is one way, symbolism is one way of, of showing that, that sort of allegiance to the Antichrist. By embellishing his own symbolism because we do that, human beings do that. Throughout, whether you're Muslim, Hindu, Christian, doesn't matter who you are. Whichever creed that you follow, you will always try to embellish symbolism of that creed. So for example, me putting this on and this, this on. It, it's, it's got nothing to do with Islam in that sense, but there is a symbolic representation. That, that this attire is associated with a Muslim. And this is why I put it on because that's what I want to advocate. The same case applies to any other denomination. And that denomination that follows the Antichrist, they will do his symbolism. And uh, and advocate it, one-aidness and all kinds of, you know, the pyramid and these type of things. Because they are the advocates. That's their religion. That's their god. They are the ones who are making it and they are the ones who will worship it. So they're not really hiding it. It's not something that they want to hide in that sense. But the. I, I cannot hear that. But Nouruddin, I think just type, type your question out and then Adil can read it out because I'm not able to hear from, from your microphone. Just type, type out your question, then Adil can read it out for me. Well, yes, uh, that's the whole idea because he is a deceiver, right? And his objective is to deceive. And so if people follow the deceiver without knowing he's the deceiver, then he's succeeding in his mission. And that's the whole idea. That's his purpose. You see, so. Well, that's the whole, that, that's the idea is that they are not conscious about it. That's, that's the point of it. An individual who is deceived is not aware of deception. So in my book, I've highlighted three types of deceptions. A partial deception, a, a failed deception, a partial deception and a complete deception. Insofar as a complete deception is concerned, it is a deception whereby the individual is not aware of the deception. Like you don't know that you're being deceived. If you know you're being deceived, then the deception fails. Now he is Ad Dajjal. He is the deceiver. The liar. That's a definitive article. So that's his objective. If he doesn't fulfill that objective, then his purpose in existence is pointless. There's no need for him to exist. There's no need for him to exist. So he has to succeed in that. Which means there are people whom he must deceive. So there is a faction that is making him deliberately. Right? Then there, there is the, there is the fringe of it, the masses in this case, the populace. Who are unaware of that deception. So there's people who are pouring their heart out to A I, for example. This is part of your deception, you're, you're plugging in information. And by the way, the more information you give to the deceiver, the better he can perform his act. When you look at con men, for example. The more information they can get out of you, the better they will be able to con you. When you look at stage magicians, the more information, they'll ask you questions. That, you know, from which they can get certain signs, certain telltale aspects of your personality and then use that against you. So the more information you give them, the better he will be able to deceive you. This goes, includes the selfies that you take. The pictures of your food that you take before eating and posting it on Instagram. And, and here's the thing, you have people who do these type of things, they think they're doing something so profound, like, you know. There's nobody in human history has ever done what I have done, taking a picture of my food and putting it on Instagram before I eat. Or pouting my lips and taking a selfie before I, you know, just to show the world how. Nice, you know, I've been, I've dressed up today for myself, you know. Why, why do you need to do that? They don't even know. What's that, what is that data, that information that you're providing, what is it going to be used for? They don't know. But it has to be used for something, it must be going somewhere, well, where is it going? It's going to this source, it's going to the same source that created it. And the more information you feed it, the better the deception is going to be. Because then they can start providing you with information. That is going to keep your mind contained within the materialistic world. So that that mind that I mentioned in the beginning. Is only going to marvel at the phenomenal, but not at the nominal, not at the supernatural. And even then, within the phenomenal, it is only going to marvel at those aspects of phenomena that are artificial. Not natural. Artificial. Things that are made, you see the next new device, the, 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 the new technology. You see, the, the new iPhone is out. And then somebody is going to spend hours filming a review about it so that they can post it on YouTube. You see, and then somebody else is going to watch that for however long it will take. And then he's going to comment. And then, and then somebody else is going to make a counter video of that, and then somebody else is going to go out and purchase it. And then that person is going to sit for hours flipping through it like this. And this is how the mind is, is wasted out. Because again, going back to the subject of time. Everyone has a limited amount of time, what are you using your time for? In what is your mind engaged in, insofar as the natural and the supernatural? What are you trying to, what are you trying to achieve here? Now, if the Antichrist can keep your mind away from both the natural and the supernatural. And keep it within an enclosed parameter that is artificial, then he has succeeded. And this is where majority of people are. They have been deceived, right now, even before he has arrived, they are already in that bubble, they are already in that shell. Because he has so much information on every individual. That it doesn't take much for you to be kept occupied for hours scrolling up your screen. Going through information that is completely useless. It's trivial, it's pointless, it doesn't point you in any real direction, it doesn't help you understand the question. Of who are you, what is your identity? And what is your destiny? Where are you going? It doesn't help you understand that question, those two questions. Did I, did I help, uh, brother Nuruddin? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm really sorry, I'm having trouble understanding your question because of the, uh, volume. Ad- Adil, do you have access to that? Can you read that for me, please, thank you? Yes, you can always free yourself. And that's, that's the whole point of it also, is can you get out of the deception, but the first step to that is to realize that you're being deceived. You have to know that you're being lied to. And the only way to do that is to question what's being given to you. Once you start questioning what's being given to you. That normality that you're living, the life that you're living in the normal sense, you're waking up at this time and you're doing this and you're doing that and you're doing that, why are you doing that? You see, go back, if you remember those who did the course on Kemi Asaada. That's the first question that Imam Al Ghazali asks in his book. He's asking the question, do you know yourself? And if you say that, oh yes, I know myself. Imam Al Ghazali challenges that by saying, no, you don't. You know your body, you know your limbs, you know the parts of your, of your face and all that, you know all that. But do you know why you do the things that you do? Do you know why you eat when you're hungry and what you're eating? Do you know where that drive is coming from? If you cannot understand that about you, the normality, the things that you do in your day-to-day, you don't know yourself. And if you don't know yourself. Then you're not really thinking. Or go, somebody is doing the thinking for you. Means you're following a preset of instructions given to you. Your life is unfolding based on somebody else's directive. And that directive has one source only, it's not divinity. It's definitely, if it's not divinity, it's demonic. If it's not come from revelation, it's come from the Antichrist, it's come from the demonic source. Once you realize that. And the only way you realize that is if you question that. Why do I do this? Why do I look at my phone? Why do I sit like this? Why do I eat in this manner? It goes right down to the finest particulate moment of your existence, you have to question that. You have to really, really reflect. On the smallest thing, the thing that you always overlook, that you ignore about yourself, that you think is normal. You have to question that. Unless you question it, you will not know the answer, you have to, why do I do this? Why do I dress in this way? Why do I walk like this? Is this the way it's supposed to be done? Am I doing what everybody else is doing? You see, if you find yourself like that. Then you are, your mind is either a hive mind, is part of a hive mind or a herd mind. It's not an independent mind. A hive mind. Is like the bees, you see, you have the queen bee, she gives instructions and the hive moves accordingly. She controls the entire popu- population, so there's a singular source. That's giving instructions and you're following that source, in this case, what I'm trying, in terms of allegory. You're basically following a particular ideology that's out there. And this is why you will be given a label, oh, so-and-so, okay, you're an atheist, or you're a pacifist, or you are a so-and-soist, and you're a so-and-soist, you're following a set of instructions. The herd mind is like. Which is what's like, it's happening right now in, in East Africa. In Rift Valley. I'm, I'm from that, that area. Um, I'm from Nairobi, it's just very close by. Every, every year you have two migrations that take place across the, across the Kenya-Tanzania border. It's called the Great Migration of wildebeest. Um, zebras, giraffe, all these herbivores, they move back and forth. Seasonally, depending on, you know, where they're able to get their water source and food from. So that's, that's a herd mind, there's no specific leader, there's no specific. Uh, individual at the forefront that's telling them, go this way or go that way. Each, each individual in that herd just moves whichever way the herd as a whole moves. Right? And in logic, that's called the bandwagon fallacy. Following a popular opinion because it's popular, because everyone's doing it, so I do it. And so you find, like mothers, for example, will give their children the, the phone to use, why? Because everyone's doing it. But you don't question that. You see? Go and drink Starbucks coffee, why? Everyone's doing it, there's nothing wrong with it, why are you doing it? You have to question yourself, why are you doing it? Forget what everyone else is doing. Until you question yourself. You will not be able to get out of the deception, you won't even know that you're being deceived, you're just going with the flow. I mean, and that's why we did that course, we did the course on, on Kemi Asaada. It was not just like an introduction to psychology. It's part of my, my project in terms of, because I have that condensed in this book. The One-Eyed Impostor. The Nafs, the understanding of the Nafs. The Aqal, the Shahwa, the Gada, all those components. There is a section, there's a chapter there on deception itself and the mechanics, the neuroscience of deception. It's, it's there, and we did that course on, on Kemi Asaada for that purpose. If you can understand yourself, then you can make. The right decisions regarding yourself, your faith, your existence in this world, otherwise. Join the masses. Brother Nuruddin, did I answer your question? I can't go into too much detail on that, but your, your question is very important. And I think this would require its own real session, because we are now talking about. Uh, real solutions, right? How do you, how do you. Uh, deal with the situation and what options are available for Muslims? The Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam did point to Suratul Kahf as the solution. And then within the Surah, there are four solutions that I, I, I came up with. Because there are four parables that have been mentioned in there, four examples that you can follow. One of those is the example of the, of the Ashabul Kahf. Um, to make Hijra for the purpose of preserving your faith. Meaning that if you are in a land whereby your faith is being questioned. And, and you are in a situation whereby. You're, 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 you're likely to face some sort of either physical persecution. Or, or even in, an, an, an ideological war that can really destroy your faith. Then Hijra is an option for you to, to do, to migrate, to leave that land. And to find safer sanctuary elsewhere. The second is that of the, of the rich man and the poor man, the parable of the rich man and the poor man. Meaning, insofar as the rich man is concerned, if you have wealth, then don't let that wealth corrupt you, be cautious of that. And if you don't have wealth, then don't seek it out ardently. Because that will also corrupt you, because that's one of the testers. In, 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 in my book, the One-Eyed Impostor, there's the, I think it's the second chapter. The test of, yeah, the test of life. In, in time and, and, and dimensionality. And one of the tests that I put in there, because I highlighted four tests. One of the tests I put in there is, um, is the test of tawazun, of balance or of moderation. And it was to say that. To be cautious of your life. You can, yeah, you can read about it, it's in, it's on page thirty-nine. Uh, sorry, from page thirty-six, the test of wealth, health and indulgence. The test of wealth, health and indulgence. Or the test of tawazun, the test of balance, of moderation. Imam Al Ghazali thought that the human mind was created to identify balance. And to live in balance and moderation, and he thought that knowledge was one of those things that provided the human mind balance. But it needed to be cultivated. And this is why he put a lot of emphasis on, on cultivation, cultivating the human mind through logic. In fact, one of his books, he titled, he titled it Qistas al-Mustaqim. The, the, the balance, basically. Um, or, or sort of the upright, the, the pathway that's, that's the, the, the upright balance. Not pathway, I'm mixing it up with Siratul Mustaqim. The upright balance, and he gives the example of Ibrahim alayhi salam, who is out in the wilderness. And he's trying to find meaning in life. And how he uses logic to arrive at a sound conclusion. This is what, you will be subjected to these type of tests in life, you will be given wealth, you will be. Wealth will be taken away from you, you will be given good health, health will be taken away from you. You will be given family, kin, children, parents, brothers, sisters. Um, they will be taken away from you, all this you will be given and you will be taken away. He is the one Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala who gives you expansion and gives you contraction. And so he tests you in both. And what's being tested is your indulgence, your moderation. Which you will gauge for yourself in the moment. The age of the Antichrist is going to aggravate that test. Is really going to push you to the limits. And there are people who, the temptation is everywhere. Wherever you go, that temptation is there, whether it's food, whether it's fashion, whether it's whatever, you name it. Walk down the streets and there's brand names everywhere. You know. It's just, it's all over, unless you're, you know, you're living in isolation, uh, you, you, it's very difficult to get out of that. To escape that. Turn on the television and it's temptation after temptation. Advertisement in every aspect, every way you look is advertisement. And that's what advertisement, that's what it's designed for, it's designed to advert. Your attention. That's an advertisement, to advert your attention, to capture it, to draw you in. It's designed to have that psychological hook of desire. That's what it's, every advertisement is designed to do that. And you'll be tested, and so this is the, I'm, I'm, I'm really honing on, on this particular day, because this is where a majority of people. Will find their solution. Not everyone can make Hijra, and not everyone can follow the other two paths either, but this particular path, this is where a lot, majority of people are tested. Those who have wealth, they are tested, those who don't have wealth, they are tested. Those who have, you are tested for moderation, and those who don't have, you are tested for patience and forbearance. And, 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 and holding yourself from being drawn into the temptation, into the deception itself. The third solution is that of Majmaul Bahrein. Of finding a balance, once again, it's about balance, of finding a balance. In knowledge, because knowledge gives you empowerment, it empowers you to evaluate, to estimate, to understand. And to penetrate the deception. And this is the pathway of Musa, moving from. The, the outward knowledge of things to a more inward knowledge of things. Moving the light of reason. And having it placed under the light of revelation. And having a balance within the individual, an epistemological balance, this is the path of scholarship. If you can study and study those knowledges and sciences that are praiseworthy in and of themselves. And are beneficial, not just to yourself, but to community as a whole. Then dedicate, you know, yourself to that. Because if you cannot be a solution to yourself, then maybe you can be a solution to others. In terms of that knowledge benefiting other people. The fourth solution is more of a solution for those who are in positions of power. Those who have ability to act, to physically act, and this is where leadership comes in. And that's the pathway of Dulkarnain. And it is to observe how he manages that pathway, because there is careful judgment applied. And that careful judgment is also based on sound reasoning. All three, all four solutions, by the way, are based on sound reasoning and sound judgment. Dulkarnain is tested on the first part of his journey, when he succeeds in that journey. When he passes that test, then he's shown the second part of his journey, and he's tested again on that. How does he deal with the power that is given to him, the position and the rank given to him? How does he enact his ability of leadership? And when he succeeds in that, that's when he's given the final journey. In which he can actually do something. in which he can actually do something, uh, that is everlasting in the temporal world. But all four are based on judgment and sound reasoning. Whether you want to make Hijra, whether you remain where you are and moderate yourself and deal with the situation as it arises. Or you take a path of learning and scholarship so that that knowledge can benefit, can come back into the, into the society. Or you take on the path of leadership. These are the solutions applied to you. Because these are the four facets in which the Antichrist is going to attack. He's going to attack these four facets. He's going to attack faith. That's what the, the, the Ashabul Kahf, they try to preserve. He's going to attack wealth, health, indulgence. He's going to attack knowledge itself. And he's going to attack the, the structure of leadership. Did that answer your question? Nooruddin?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay, Insha Allah.
Okay, Usta, there is another question from the chat.
Yeah.
Uh, Assalamualaikum, Usta. I haven't, uh, read your book yet, but Insha Allah in future. I would like to know, uh, I mean, is the Jasad the Dajjal?
Okay, so there's no account of Suleiman alaihissalam himself interacting with the, with the Jasad? What has been spoken of in the Quran is that he was given a vision of a Jasad. So he, he saw in terms of a vision, a Ruya. Um, in my book, you will find this in, in chapter number, in chapter five. The chapter is titled, it's chapter five, The Vision of Suleiman. On page number ninety-seven is where the Ayah is, uh, it comes in. Wal Qad fatna Suleiman wa alqayna ala kursihi jasadan thumma anaba. Qala Rabi ghfirli waha bl mulkan la yambagi li ahadin mimbadi. Inna kantul wahab. So, the Ayah says that we definitely tried. Wal Qad fatna, we most certainly tried Suleiman. We, we, we tested him. And, and we, wa alqayna, we, we sort of cast. It's a, it's a, wa alqayna is like a projection. We projected onto his throne, a, a, a Jasad. A lifeless body, a hollow, lifeless body. We projected it onto his throne. And so this is a vision, it's not a dream. It's not a dream in that sense. It's a physically, like he's seeing his seat, he's seeing his throne, but something has been projected there. He's seeing something else that is taking its position there. And this really, you know, gets to him. So he turns away from that, realizing what this entity is. He turns away from that and he asks Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala that this kingdom that he has been granted by Allah to ensure that it does not fall into the control of anyone else after him. Because he's understood from that projection that here is an entity that is going to take that throne from him. And what this entity is going to do with the power that Israel had under Suleiman alaihissalam. Suleiman was just, he was, it, it really disturbed him. Because this is a lifeless entity. Now, the word Jasad has been defined by, by many of the scholars, but I like Ra'hab al-Ishfa, Ishfaani's definition the best. Um, Imam Ra'hab, he in his, um, Kitab, his, his dictionary, actually, it's called Al-Mufradat. Um, it's like, it's a dictionary of Quranic terms. And he provides the definition by examining the other mentionings of the word Jasad in the Quran and he puts a definition together for that. And then he confirms that definition with how the term Jasad was used in the Arabic language by the Arabs before. So he references the earlier dictionaries that were compiled by the Arabs scholars. Uh, in particularly, Al-Khalil al-Farahidi, who wrote the Kitab al-Ain, is the first lexicon of the Muslims and the Arabic language. And what he says is that a Jasad only belongs to the human category. That's number one. It doesn't belong to gin category or animal category or, or angelic category or any of these other categories. It belongs to the human being. And number two, it is an entity that does not consume. Meaning it doesn't eat food. Why? Because it doesn't need to. The, it's, it's dead, it's hollow. It's not, it's sort of, it's, yeah, it's dead. It's like a corpse. A corpse would be called a Jasad. Um, number three, it is called a Jasad because it does not have an essence occupying it. So this is where there's a difference between Jism and Jasad. A Jism, like me right now, this would be my Jism. Why? Because I'm alive, there is a soul within it. But if I was to die, then this would just be a corpse. It would be a body. And then it would be called a Jasad. So it is, it is empty inside, it's hollow, there's no essence within it. But what Suleiman saw was this entity on his throne that was animate. It was observant. It was looking at him. And this is what frightened him. Not frightened in the sense of hope, but frightened in the sense of what this entity entails. Now, the Prophet SAW did say that every prophet warned his people against the one-eyed impostor. I'm, I'm translating verbatim from the Arabic. Every prophet warned his people against the one-eyed impostor. One-eyed meaning what? It's not the, the one-iness of, of, you know, one of these is broken. Or, or there's an eye patch or something. That's not what it means. It means that there is the, there's the physical sight that observes phenomena. And then there is the inner sight that interacts with numina. That's the, 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 the mind itself has access to the outward through the physical sight and then has access to the inward through that inner sight. And that's why it's called insight. See, so you have sight and you have insight. You have, you have intelligence, which is tele. It's from the same root that you get things like telephone and tele, television, right? Telephono is phono, meaning sound. So telephono, it is external, you can hear the sound from an external device, telephono. And then you've got television, which is external vision, it's sight from outside. So you have intelligence and you have intelligence. Right? You have two vision, which is an external acquisition of, of knowledge. Then you have intuition. There's an internal realization of knowledge as well. So you've got both of these. But here is an entity that Suleiman is seeing, has got outward characteristics. Is a Jasad, has outward characteristics, but has no inward attributions. Meaning he is one-eyed. He's mono-focused, he's singular in terms of perception. And he understands what this entity is in terms of its projection. What does it entail? Because he has also warned his people about the one-eyed impostor. This is an impostor who wants to take over the rulership of the Holy Land. That's why he makes that Dua. He turns back to his Lord and says, this kingdom that you have granted me, la yambagi li ahadin mimbadi. Should not fall, do not let it fall to anyone after me. Let it, let its, let its level, its, 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 uh, its status, its power, let it die with me. And then that's what transpired after Suleiman alaihissalam. Did that answer your question? Did I answer your question regarding Suleiman?
Actually, it's a question from the chat and also there is another question.
Yeah.
Uh, regards to, uh, Surah Ashshwara.
Mm-hmm.
Ashshwara, uh, Ayah one-twenty-eight and, uh, one-twenty-nine. Which is, uh, as per the above Ayah, Allah per se doesn't like human being building huge structures. Then why a prophet of Allah like Suleiman al Islam offer it? Ashshwara, one, uh, verse number, uh, Ayah number one-twenty-eight and one-twenty-nine.
Ashshwara, not Shura, okay.
No, Ashshwara. It's the twenty-sixth of Surah.
One-twenty-six.
The translation, uh, is.
Yeah. The, the word here, at, uh, at tabnuna, which is to construct bikulli ri'ain, on every, on every elevation. Ayatan is like a, like a mark, you know? Um, ta'ba'toon, that sort of projects your own, I conquered this, I achieved this. It doesn't necessarily mean a tall building, it could be anything, you know, like, like Americans, you know, they went to the moon, planted a flag. We did this, he became here. Or climb up the mountain, put a flag up there, Mount Everest, I made it. It's more to do with vanity, it's not to do with an actual construction of a tall building. And then, wa tata'hiduna, and then you take, the itta'hadu, tta'hadu is to, is to take. So I think you have the wrong translation there also. Uh, wa tata'hiduna masan'aa. Masan'aa, sun'aa is to build something. Sun'aa because it could refer to anything in terms of, of a, in, in, in fact, if you want to give this a more contemporary, uh, meaning, basically anything that is technologically related. Anything techne, anything that man crafts. That's really what sun'aa is to do, is sun'aa is to craft. And, and craft is one of the meanings of the word techne from the original Greek, which is now what we call technology. So anything that you craft. So you take these things that you make yourselves. Is wa ha, I would translate this, wa tata'hiduna masan'aa. You take these things that you craft yourself, you make them yourselves. Um, la allakum tahludun. And then you, you assume by that, that you're going to be immortal. You see? You're going to achieve immortality because you made something. And which is really astounding, Subhanallah, that you brought this Ayah here. Because this is one of the things that, that the modern world is obsessed about. They think that through their technology and all these things, they're going to achieve immortality.
Can we connect, uh, with the, the Freemasonry, Masonry?
Well, must, it's, it's a much more generic term in that sense. Sun'aa is to make things. Masonry is a type of crafting. Woodworking is a different type of crafting, you know? Um, basket weaving is a type of crafting. These are crafts, these are things that we make. But there's a difference between the one who is making to fulfill a necessity and the one who is making to fulfill their own vanity. You see, I'll give you an example in this. The person who invented the telephone was not fulfilling vanity. He was an inventor. And he wanted to make a device by which communication could take place over long distance. So that was his function and then he gave it form. Now, the person who is making iPhones and this phone and the other phone and the one with this app and this thing and then so and so and so and so forth, these people are not fulfilling necessity. These people are fulfilling their own vanity. It's because they can, that's why they do. And then when they come on stage, you can read their language. You can read the way they present themselves, the pride that is radiating from them, the arrogance that comes from them, like they've achieved immortality. That's what the Ayah is talking about. It's, it's just remarkable that you even had to point this out. But that's what the Ayah is talking about. At tabnuna bikulli ri'ain. You're going to build, you're going to put up a, a mark on every elevated position. Ayatan ta'ba'toon. An, a, a, an Ayah assign a mark of your own vanity, of your own pride. Wa tata'hiduna masan'aa. And you're going to take the things that you make with your, your petty hands, your crafts. You're going to take that, la allakum tahludun, thinking that you are immortal? That you're going to so, supersede all of creation? It's talking about the kind of delusion that they live in. That's, that's my understanding of the Ayah. Allahu A'lam. Be careful with translations. Yeah, that's the difference. That's the difference in terms of, of crafting. Crafting out of necessity, crafting for beauty, real beauty, genuine beauty. Crafting for creativity, crafting for, in terms of an art, that's different. As compared to crafting for just because you want to express yourself. That's what he's referring to. You see, someone can make a film, for example. In, you know, cinematography is a kind of a craft, is a kind of art form, a medium of storytelling. And someone can make a film for that purpose, that they have a story to tell and a moral that they want to spread and, you know, also hope that it will change people's lives for the better. Someone can do it for that purpose. But then there's someone else who wants to make a film because they can, because they have the money, because they want to show off themselves, because they want to come up on the red carpet. They want people to sing songs of praise of them, see, he's such a superstar, et cetera, et cetera. Someone's doing that for that purpose. And then, and they think that this makes them immortal. And yet they, immortal here doesn't mean physical immortality. It's more like a, an exaggeration. This is rhetoric also, is exaggerating it to prove the point. Um, but people will do it for that purpose. And that's what's being dis, uh, you know, being given here is a distinction.
Okay, Usta, there is another question. I have not yet read the book and my question may be out of the scope of this meeting. Allah did not mention the false Messiah in the Quran. Allah does what he wills. Is it because of what Rasulullah SAW said about the false Messiah? Uh, Gog and Magog are mentioned in the Quran and yet the majority denied that they are not here now? Are the majority being deceived? What is the connection between Gog and Magog and the false Messiah?
Yes, I understood, yeah, understood. The, the reason why I believe and Allahu A'lam, I have to be careful speaking on the speech of Allah and, and his intentions. But the reason why I believe that, that Dajjal is not mentioned explicitly in the Quran is that that in and of itself, of knowing who the deceiver is, is a matter of faith and is part of whether or not you will succeed, um, the, the deception that will take place. Part of that requires faith in the Prophet SAW and what he has said. Because if it's a matter that has been mentioned in the Quran, then it is not something that can be debatable. But people do debate this matter itself when it comes to the Hadith. And there are many people who simply do not want to accept that the Dajjal is something that's real, that is already manifest and highly anticipated, you know, in full manifestation in the, in the near future. There are many people who do not want to accept that. And in my book, that's a criterion that I have put in the very beginning. That you either accept that it is real right now, it's happening, or you reject it. There's no middle ground there. Because I don't play with middle ground fallacies. If you accept it, then you should be ready to, um, to attest that the life you've been living till now has been questionable. The things that you've been doing, the, the technologies that you've been so eager about as if it's the next best thing closest to heaven, you need to be questioning that. The lifestyle that you've been living, you need to change that. There are sacrifices. There are sacrifices that you now need to make if you accept that this is an antichristal age that we are living in. You have to make certain changes and people will not. The reason, my wife is, is laughing because she kept asking me this question. And why people don't want to accept that? And, and, and the answer that I gave her was that because to accept that this is an antichristal age. Means that they have to change their lifestyles that they are not prepared to do. Then they will, they're not prepared to let go of these lifestyles that they are so eager, they're so accustomed to, so attached to. You see, so that's going to be a point, and that's why the entirety of the Quran, though it doesn't mention the Dajjal explicitly. You will find his mention, his implicit mention in almost every, um, in every surah of the Quran. I, I can compile, I can give you a whole disposition of the Dajjal from the Quran alone without mentioning the hadith. And I think I do that for the most part of the book that I've put together, almost everything that I've mentioned in the majority of it is from the Quran. Um, as for Gog and Magog. The, the impression that I see people holding about Gog and Magog is that. You know, these are creatures that are living underground and they are. Always digging and trying to get out, but somehow they just cannot get out, and then ultimately they will get out and they. They, they look like goblins and they have big ears and, you know, they're gonna. Uh, spread out and eat everything, and that's, this is, this is the impression that people have about Gog and Magog. It's unfortunate because this was not the impression of previous scholars. Prior to the nineteenth century, the twentieth century, that was not the impression of those scholars, if you read their works. They do speak about Gog and Magog to, to a great degree, and even insofar as identification of genealogy and these type of things. The late nineteenth, twentieth century of scholarship has all but. In one sense deliberately suppressed that and in another sense just completely ignored it as not a fundamental requirement of scholarship, so they didn't pursue it any further. But if, if you, if somebody actually takes, goes deeper into prior works and. Will find a lot of material regarding Gog and Magog, regarding their genealogy, regarding their geography, their placement, their movement, their migration. A lot of things, even their linguistics, their language as well, there is a lot of information that scholars have explored in the past. Modernity, the modern contemporary scholars unfortunately have really lapsed on that, and it's very, uh, you know, it's regrettable. That's been further compounded by film and media, because abstraction from, from words is different. When compared to abstraction from forced imagery. So, you know, coming down to the early two thousands, when, when a lot of this uh talk started coming up about. Eschatology and, and end of times and whatnot, yeah, because media was really helping to spread all this, um. Different lectures and different individual scholars going to different places to lecture on certain topics and people getting in intrigued by this. But then this was also being paired with things like cinema, and when you had now films like, uh, you know, the Lord of the Rings coming up. People started associating that imagery to Gog and Magog, because, you know, there's some of that imagery was sort of verbatim. Saying what the hadith was saying, but the, the, the people don't understand how the hadith language works in terms of its descriptives. So, that's again sort of just gets diminished and people don't end up believing in that. Then you had other mainstream scholars whom I'm not going to mention names. Start coming up with all kinds of ridiculous theories like zombie apocalypse and. Viruses and all these type of things, which is just ridiculous and, you know, they should really stop talking about subjects they have no knowledge of. Doesn't matter how popular they are, they just should just stop, just don't talk about something you have no knowledge of, that you really haven't studied. Stop trying to explain things that are not part of your, if you are a Mufti stick to, to, to Fatawa. Don't talk about eschatology, that's not your domain, you see? If you are, if you are, uh, uh, you know, a mutakallim, stick to aqidah. Teach that, teach Quran, teach, do, do those things, don't talk on subjects you have, because you're leading people astray. And the image is now, the concept created in people's minds leads them to. Not take the matter as seriously as they should, and this is where the problem lies. Now unfortunately, I've not had the time to really talk about Gog and Magog in my writings as much, because there's a lot of research also involved in compilation. But I'll leave you with this in terms of Gog and Magog. When it comes to these, to Gog and Magog, you have to first of all most remember that it's not about genealogy or genetics. The Quran does not give you genetic markers regarding this, this, this particular sign. The Quran gives you an ideological marker, and then that ideological marker is Fasad. These people are identified as Mufsidun Phil'Arb, they are individuals of grave corruption in the world. The second point on that, after that, is to understand what does Fasad mean? Because again, and I blame these on the scholars who lapse in, in, in teaching. You know, these concepts the way they should be taught, because they paint the picture of Fasad being related to things like pollution. You know, these type of things. But there are other kinds of Fasad that are far worse than material corruption. The kind of Fasad that for example challenges divinity in terms of dominion. The kind of Fasad that is propagated by something like secularism. These are the markers that identify Gog and Magog. And therefore, it's not about genetics, it's not about which race is it today, it's not about that. Because if they are already spread out in the world, then it doesn't matter which direction you point at, you will be pointing at Gog and Magog. Whether it is Europeans, or it is Chinese, or it is Russians, or it is Africans, or whatever it is. The way you will be able to distinguish who is Gog and Magog and who is not, is by looking at what ideology that they follow. Is it that ideology that is challenging divine authority and sovereignty in the world? Is it that ideology that wants to maintain, to, to, to build a supremacy of mankind in the world? Is it that ideology from which stems things like genetic modification? AI, robotics, these type of things. Is it that ideology which propagates other ideologies, other ideas like evolution? And these, these type of things, because these are the areas of corruption. Corruption in education, corruption in knowledge, corruption in religion, corruption in finance and economics, corruption in politics and governance. Where does that come from? That is Gog and Magog, that's the one you want to identify as Gog and Magog. The one who wants to spread democracy, the one who is talking about secular, the one who has turned virtue into values. The one who talks about values, you see, Western values, Western democracy, that is Gog and Magog. And whosoever follows that ideology, that person is one of them. Wa man yata wallahu minkum fa innahu minhum. Whosoever amongst you follows them, you are one of them. So if you adapt the same ideology, if you speak the same language, because whoever speaks the language of a people belongs to that people. Man takallam ala arabiya, fahu arabi. One who speaks the Arabic language is an Arab. Therefore, if you are speaking their language, and I don't mean if you're speaking English, English is not the problem. But if you speak their language, the way they speak, the way they articulate, the terms that they use and the meanings they associate with those terms. If you speak like them, you're one of them, consider yourself part of Gog and Magog. This is where they converge, Gog and Magog and Ad-Dajjal, this is where they converge. Because they share the same idea, they have the same objective, the same purpose, it's all a convergence. All the ten signs that have been mentioned by the Prophet SAW regarding the hour, the ten major signs that we call them. The, 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 the ayats al-kubra. Or, or, or they also call Asharat al-kubra. These ten are not isolated incidences, in eschatology, you have to remember, these ten signs are not isolated. They are all interlinked, this is not Abu Bilal saying it, this is the Prophet SAW also said it in another hadith. That these signs are like pearls in a necklace, they're all joined in the same loop. When they break, they all fall at the same time. They all manifest in, in and around the same instances, they're all part of the same grand agenda. Which is a demonic agenda, so they do converge in that sense. Gog and Magog, Ad-Dajjal, Da'batul Ard, and the Dukhan, the, the great smoke, the fire. That, that rises, the earthquakes, and the coming of the Mahdi is a challenge to them. And the, and the, and the return of Nabi Isa is a challenge to them, but they all pertain to the same subject matter. And so they all converge into a singularity, a single point. So, Gog and Magog and Ad-Dajjal, this is where they converge ideologically, they want to establish the same world order. They belong to the same world order, or, or they want to establish the same world order, which is what they call Novus Ordo Secrum. A new secular order, a new worldly order, without divinity in the picture. This is ours, we will establish it. And when the Quran, in, in the Quran, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says. Wa idza qil alahum la tufsidu fil ard. When it is say to them, don't cause corruption in the world. What do they say? Qalu innama nahnu muslihun. We're just trying to make things better, we're just trying to make a better world, this is their language, when you hear them speak. In their summits and their climate control things and whatever they want, they're, they're doing. And the United Nations Security Councils and World Economic Forums. And, you know, they're all the activists will come out, save the planet, et cetera, et cetera, you see? That's their language, qalu innama nahnu muslihun, we're just trying to make the world a better place. Ala innahum humul mufsidun, but they are the ones who are causing this corruption. Walakin la yashguroon, they have no clue. They have no sense of what they're doing, they don't even realize, they're completely gone on the other side. They think that, why do, why are they doing genetic, what is that? The, the genetic technology? Gene editing, why are they doing that? You, you think it's for, it's to cure Alzheimer's and, and cancer, that's why they're doing it, that's not why they're doing it. They think that they're going to make a new human being, you see, next step in evolution. But that's corruption, corruption of what divinity has created. He didn't create this human being, this body, for you to cha- make changes to it. Why didn't he do it in the first place then? Do it, do, put the changes in there? Or he, or he created this so that you can bring upgrades? Is that why he created the land and the sea, so that you can put up shopping malls and say we are doing something phenomenal here? That's corruption, that's Fasad, very long answer. But I hope it, it answers that. Um, this, this is, these are subjects that, that, you know. Um, we can really go on and on talking about. Uh, anyway. Is there anyone, anyone else, any other sub, any other question? Wa alaikum salam, rahmatullahi barakatuh.
I'm, I suppose I want to speak with you, I'm very fascinated about your, your knowledge because. I don't find these topics where I live in South Africa. And I always hear Sheikh Imran, he's saying, he's talking about the scholarship of Khidr al-Islam. And then sometimes I want to enroll at Madina University or Azam University, but. Uh, he, he talks about the, the qualities of Khidr, Khidr al-Islam's scholarship. Where do I find that scholarship, is there curriculum or are you currently teaching it? Uh, where do I find that scholarship? Does Sheikh understand me?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's scholarship, he's, he's speaking metaphorically, it's not, it's not a scholarship you can study in any university.
Yeah, but I'm saying.
It's a scholarship that comes after the scholarship of the book, it comes after that, it comes. But it is, it is part of the journey of scholarship. It is the, it is that part of knowledge which fulfills the second part of the journey, there is the, knowledge has a two-part journey. One part of the journey is you arriving to knowledge, you arriving to understanding, but then it stops there. The second part of the journey is Allah unveiling it for you, giving you an understanding. That's the one he's referring to as the scholarship of Al-Khidr. It's not, it's, it's Ulm la duni, it comes directly from Allah, it's not something you will study in any institute. No one can teach you, I can't teach you, no one can teach you that, Al-Khidr himself cannot teach you that, he couldn't teach Musa that. It's a kind of knowledge that comes directly from Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, he gives you the opening, he gives you the understanding, but. Do not expect to just receive it. There has to be effort made on your part, you have to be readied for rece- for receivership. Means you have to go through the process of learning yourself, you, you, you learn that which is known in order to reach the unknown. And at that point of the unknown is when Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala will make known to you. So, going to Al-Azhar or going to Al-Madinah University or going to any other Islamic institute to study. You should definitely do that, don't restrict yourself to not doing that because there's a special knowledge somewhere else that you might get, no. You have to learn the basics first, you have to at least reach a level of understanding before you can progress further. Into thought, into inquiry, I hope that helps you. Um, I mean, even in South Africa, you have incredible, you know, Islamic university there. And other institutes also there of learning, you should, you should definitely try it even there. Once you master the basics, the basic sciences, then you progress from there, you move on from science and you go into philosophy. Then you move on from philosophy and you go deeper into thought. And then the more you go through life, knowledge is a lifelong thing, it's not four years. Um, yeah, it's a lifelong thing, you have to keep, one of the requirements of knowledge, the Ulama say is tu'la zaman. It's having a long life. To, to seek out knowledge, one of the requirements is to have a long life. Because you can never master everything, even in the lifetime that you have, it's not possible. But I will recommend you to start with language, if you want to really take on the path of knowledge. To, 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 once you get your, you know, the mask, the, the basics of understanding, like your basic fiqh and aqidah. And, you know, getting onto a path of taskiya, um, the, the one thing that I would recommend is, is go for language. Because if you can master language, it will open up the doors for other sciences for you to master.
Specifically the Arabic?
Yes, specifically the Arabic language. The, the, the scholars say, the scholars say al-aarabiyyatum miftahululum. You know, Arabic is the keys to the sciences, if you can, if you can have that, master that key, you will unlock all the other sciences.
I, I, I know, from, from another scholar, uh. Rasulullah was given the Arabic language with comprehensiveness.
Yeah, the, the scholars even they attest that no one can master the Arabic language, save a prophet, yeah. Save the Prophet SAW, and he had an incredible, it was just amazing when he would speak. If, when we do the seerah, Insha Allah, we'll go into a little bit more detail. And, and hopefully I will be able to show you what that was like to hear the Prophet SAW speak. You know, Imam Malik, when he would, when he would hear a hadith, they, they said that he would go, he would become red in the face. He would just become like, it would just awe him, you know, he would just become suddenly, it would change his state immediately, just hearing the words. And, and, and his, his, his session, he had a different session for Fiqh and a different session for Hadith in his Majlis. And his, his Hadith Majlis was, was something else entirely. He would, he would take a bath, he would change his robes, he would put on perfume. He would light like Bakhur and Uud or something incense. And then when they would gather, everyone would just keep quiet completely, there's no talking in that Majlis. And then he would sit down and he would recite the Hadith. And he would give the whole, the entire chain of, of, of the transmitters and complete the entire Hadith. And yeah, he would give it its own Maqam, just, and the words just amazing. If, if anyone does an analysis of the Hadith and examines the Prophet's words, his manner of speech, it's just truly amazing. I, I don't know anyone more articulate than the Prophet, just by looking at the Hadith. Anyway. Is there any, any other question?
Yes, sir, we have two more questions, one from the chat. We, Dajjal, have Jins under his command. How do we save ourselves from unseen forces that are so powerful? And there is another question, which is, can you also do a lecture on Seher and Jins?
Yeah, the, the lecture on Seher and, and Jin has been requested so many times over. I'm sorry, you know, this is one subject that I'm very careful of because people can have the wrong impression and, and also end up leading themselves astray. Plus you have to remember, when you're talking about this subject matter, there's other people, there's other entities that are listening in. It can become a tricky affair. It, I'm not speaking out of fear, I'm just speaking out of caution on this, it's a, it's a sensitive, it's a very sensitive topic. With the Dajjal, yes, he already has the Jin under his command. So he's definitely going to have more, but not the Jin as a whole, the Jin are not, you have to distinguish between Jin and Shaytan. You have to make that distinction, because Jin, there are believers among the Jin. There are Jin who are very helpful even in your life. You, they're probably a Jin who wakes you up for Fajr and you don't even know. You know? There, and, and then there are Shayatin who are, who are the demonic among the Jin. Shaytan just means demon. And there are demonic people, human beings, there are also demonic Shayatin who align themselves with demonic forces, so yes, he has those under his control. And they are already, you know, out there spreading mischief on his behalf in that sense. So yeah, he already has that in his control. The, as for the session Insha Allah, we'll look at how we can arrange that. I would rather do it with everyone, you know, present with me here physically. Rather than the, the, have the Zoom connection, I, I just don't like the, like I said, it's a sensitive topic, it's better to be together, anyway. So if you guys want to come and join me here in, in, in Turkey, you're more than welcome, Insha Allah. Can we, because it's Maghrir time almost for us here, so maybe we can have one or two final questions. And then Insha Allah, we can do another session on the same subject if, if you guys want.
Sir, there was one question that was unanswered, which is, how do we save ourselves from unseen forces that are so powerful?
So unseen forces do not, first of all, do not put yourself in a state of fear against them in the sense of, you should have a fear, fear is a, is a powerful motivator, it keeps you on your toes, but not fear in the sense that they can do anything to you. Because you have to remember that they cannot do anything to you, you know, without the permission of Allah. And so when it comes to protection, protection is only found with Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. This is why the first utterance is: أعوذ بالله من الشيطان الرجيم I seek refuge in Allah from the cursed demon. So there are some Awwad that you can always do to protect yourself. There's some practices that you can do to always protect yourself. One thing that you should always maintain is a state of purity. Because impurity is the doorway by which the demonic forces enter into your life. So maintaining purity in and around you, your home, cleanliness in your home. Keeping good smells around you. Try your best to always be in a state of Wudu. Especially when you go to sleep, try to be in Wudu because it protects you also. Sleep is a very vulnerable state to be in because you're detached from the body. You're not in the, in what's known as A'alam al-Arwah or also called A'alam al-Mithal in which the Jin have access to that also, so they can affect you and you will, but Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala will protect you. You have to always remember that, that's your main point. That Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is the one who protects you. And if an attack does happen upon you, it's because He allowed it. So you have to remember that also. And He allowed it so that you can turn back to Him. That's the only reason why any calamity befalls anybody. Whether it's from the Jin or from the world around you. The only reason why there's calamity is so you can turn back to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So this is the same. Maintain, you know, your, your Salaah is one thing, because Salaah is a protecting layer. And you know, do other Awwad as well, things like Ayatul Qursi. Selections from Suratul Baqarah, like the last three ayat are always recommended. Suratul Ikhlas, Falq al-Nas, even Surah al-Kafirun. Surat Yaseen is, is, and Suratul Waqiyah. If you can do that on a daily basis, that will be right. But these are, you have to remember that these are not, these are, they are as Asbab. They are, they are the means that Allah has given you to seek out His protection. But at the end of the day, remember, only He will protect you. So if you keep on reciting this and you do have an experience that is trial on you, don't feel like, oh, that, all that I did was, didn't really help. Do not, never feel that way, because that's Shaytan putting doubt in you. He's, he's the one who's whispering that Da, saying, "You see, it didn't really work for you, see?" So you have to, the main thing is you have to remember is that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is the one who is protecting you. No matter what you do, whatever precaution you take, at the end of the day, He's the one who is in control. Okay, one last question, I can hear the other, and so we'll, we'll end here with one final question, Insha Allah. Okay, so is that it?
No, brother, nobody has a question.
Oh, okay, go ahead, yes.
Okay, I will, I will make two questions for you, and my, the two I think is the, the answer is very long. So you can choose which one you, who's first answer, okay?
Go ahead, go ahead, Insha Allah.
Okay. The first one is, if, we can say that because the Jews raised this persecution.
Right, so the Jews, when they rejected the, the true Messiah and essentially once you reject the true one, you end up falling for the false one, yes, that was foolishness on their part. And then that's why, you know, I mean, this is just in terms of a complete overview of it. It's, it's more a reductionist, a reduced answer. There is a level of complexity and sophistication in their justifications, which is not necessarily true in and of itself, but there is a, a sophistication in their justifications. But yes, it is foolishness, and even right now, the things that they are doing, they are justifying it based on the same epistemology, the same premises. Which is, you know, more than apparent to anyone who can see that there is complete foolishness on their part. The only reason they're succeeding is because they have the power right now. But if that power was taken away from them, they would definitely just destroy themselves because of their own foolishness. This has always been part of their, I don't want to say stereotypical, but their psychology has always been like that. We, you know, they are, the Bible itself describes them as you are a stiff-necked people in the Book of Deuteronomy. They are, they are a stubborn, you know, type of people, they're just obstinate, anyway. So that's the first one, the second question, yeah. There's nothing wrong with biology and psychology. Our tradition has those sciences as well, we have Ilma al-Tubiyah, we have Ilmu al-Nafs. These are sciences that our scholars developed as well. And they studied them, and these are praiseworthy sciences to study. Even insofar as these sciences, the way they are being taught in the, in the Western world, to a certain degree, they have their benefit. If, you know, if, if you have, if you have a stab wound or a gunshot and you go to the hospital and the doctor is an atheist, you know, you, you, you accept the person's treatment of you because of what they've studied. You're not gonna sit there and say, "No, no, no, you know, this thing is, it's not right, it's come from the Dajjal, I don't trust anything you're going to do," you're not gonna do that, right? Because there is some benefit insofar, there's limited, but there is benefit in that. But it's in what the science is used and how it is applied, that's where the issue lies. The issue is not in the science itself. The knowledge itself is not the problem. The problem is in how is that knowledge being implemented? Is it being implemented, في سبيل الله for the sake of God or بيدون الله for other than God? You see, and so they're doing it for other, they're doing it for themselves. They're doing it for corruption, they're doing it for all those other things. Same psychology is being used for the manipulation of people. They use it in, in advertisements, they use it in film and media, they use it in political propaganda. They use it in these areas to manipulate the minds of people and direct them in certain ideological ways. The same case as biology is concerned. That's what they use it for, so you know, it's in what that science is being used for. But insofar as studying it, you can study it and still apply it for good. And there are individuals who use it, who study it and apply it for the sake of good. So what I'm trying to say is, don't generalize the entirety of it. Because in this world, everything has this side and the other side as well. If you generalize things as evil, then the entirety of this world will be evil to you. And you will see no beauty in this world. You will see no good in this world if you generalize it. It is, it is part of human logic, it's part of sound reasoning to be able to differentiate. This is called Firaq. Firaq is to differentiate, is to make difference between what is right and what is wrong. What is black and what is white. What is good, what is evil, what is virtuous, what is vice, is to differentiate that. So I hope I answered your question on that. And we can end here, Insha Allah. Adil, are we good?
Yes, I was not talking about biology, I was talking about psychology.
It's same as, psychology is the same thing, yeah. Yeah, the same applies to psychology, same applies to psychology. It's what it is being used for, that's where the issue lies. But studying psychology is helpful, it's helpful to the person studying it, it's also helpful to, to the one who needs it. But how it's used, that's where the problem lies.
Yes, I agree, because the problem for me, but the problem is, they don't, they don't put the soul in the quiet essence.
Well, yeah, okay, from that perspective, yes, definitely, you're right on that perspective, yeah. They don't, so their study is deficient in that sense, but it's still beneficial because their study of psychology is what's called behavioral psychology. Right, it's more behavioral, it's studying behaviors and traits, noticeable patterns in external exhibitions of the human being, the things that we do apparently. But they do not acknowledge the idea of the soul as the driving force or the idea of a heart as the seat of intention and will. So yeah, for not acknowledging, I mean, some of the, some of psychologists have actually tried to reach that far. Like, like Carl Jung was somebody who really tried to figure that out without really going into religion per se. But then they, you know, they always reach a certain limit and without accepting revelation as the guiding light of knowledge, you can't really penetrate. And some of them just went way astray, like Sigmund Freud is somebody you should never study. That just definitely, any book written by that man, just shut it, burn it. This is my advice to you. If you're studying psychology, just don't, don't, that's, that's a demonic individual. You don't want that person's thoughts in your mind. But other psychologists are definitely good to study and they have useful breakthroughs in behavioral aspect or symptomatic psychology. But you wanna go deeper into psychology, you have to do it in light of revelation. You have to acknowledge the soul, the spiritual dimension and consciousness. Anyway, I, I do need to end here now because everybody is now standing up and, because we have to pray Maghrir. And time is going, so Insha Allah. Adil, can we end the session? And if, if, if every, if people want that, we can do another session.
I think another one or two would be great.
Insha Allah.
The state of this book is very deep.
Yeah.
And over and in the much of the book, you can even avoid the class about Seher because that, that book cover everything.
Yeah, Insha Allah, Alhamdulillah, I, I tried to do as much as I can. But Insha Allah, we can do other sessions and have more discussion on the subject, Insha Allah. Now, so we can end, end here, Insha Allah. Adil, are we good to end here?
Yes, sir, we can end.
Okay, Insha Allah. Subhanakallah, bihamdika, nashhadu wa laa ilaha illa anta, nastaghfiruka wa natubu ilaiq. Rabbana taqbal minna innaka anta samiuna alim wa tuba alaina ya maulana innaka anta tawabur rahim. By rahmetika yarrahmah rahimin. Barakallah feikum, wassalamualaikum, warahmatullahi barakatuh. Jazakumullah Khairan. Thank you everyone for coming, thank you for attending those online. Jazakumullah Khairan. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala bless you. Jazakallah.